I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight to our planning, Island Planning Commission meeting. Let's start out by reading our meeting procedures. The Island Planning Commission considers applications for site plans and village preservation permits. In addition, the Island Planning Commission considers requests for rezonings, conditional and special use permits, and ordinance amendments. The Planning Commission makes final decisions on site plans and village preservation's permits, and it makes recommendations to the Board of Commissioners on rezonings, conditional and special use permits, and ordinance amendments. The Island Planning Commission allows public comments for site plans and village preservation permits. The Commission holds public hearings for rezonings, conditional and special use permits, and ordinance amendments. The planning staff presents the application request to the Planning Commission during the staff's report. This report evaluates how the proposal conforms to the Glen County zoning ordinance and other applicable regulations, and conforms to the comprehensive plan when applied to the zoning matters and ordinances. Applicants have the opportunity to present their request to the Planning Commission. It is the responsibility of the applicant to make presentations on requests and to address any conditions or factual findings with which they do not agree. Public hearings, public comments on public hearing items will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side, with a maximum of five minutes allocated to each speaker. Site plans and village preservation applications, public comments on site plans and village preservation applications will be limited to 60 minutes total per application, with a maximum of five minutes allotted to each speaker. Comments are to be limited to the relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the time allotted. The applicant may then provide a rebuttal to any testimony. The chairman may terminate testimony if it becomes repetitive. The chairman will terminate a speaker's time if the speaker begins personal attacks, your cooperation, and this process will be greatly appreciated. First item on the general, on the agenda, general business, approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Islands Planning Commission, held on February 15th, 2022, subject to any necessary corrections.
I saw Boo.
We've got a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on the question? If not, call the question. All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand, and that is unanimous. Thank you. First, item number two, village preservation. This will allow public comment for those that are here to address this item. VP 4961-207 and 209 Mallory Street facade and signage improvements. Consider design review and approval for improvements to the facade and signage at Frederica Station and Waterfront Gifts retail stores located at 207 and 209 Mallory Street, St. Simons Island. Parcels number 0404638 and 0404637. The property is zoned village mixed use and island preservation overlay. Mary Matthews, applicant and owner. Stephanie, please.
Good evening, Commissioner. Stephanie Lee, planning manager. So this is VB, VP 4961, 207 and 209 Mallory Street. So this is some facade improvements. They are doing some new signage, as well as they did a re-roof. And so they did change the roofing material. Originally, it was cedar shakes, and they did replace it with a black metal roofing. We did receive a complaint that the roofing was under construction prior to getting village preservation approval. We did contact the property owners, and it was their final day of finishing their installation. And right after that, they did apply for the village preservation application. So that's why it's before you this evening. So they were very responsive when they were, when they were informed that this didn't need village preservation. And they're also changing out some signage. So these are the photos that were included in the application packet. So Frederica Station is the new sign that has, or the Frederica Station sign is installed. As you can see in the top photo is the black metal roofing. In the bottom photos, you can see the cedar shakes that were formerly on the roof. The photo on the bottom right, that sign is no longer there. It's the waterfront gifts, and that has been removed. And they are planning to reinstall a sign that mimics and matches the Frederica Station sign. So this is a photo of what is currently out there on the property. So as I mentioned, the waterfront gift sign has been removed, but they want to replace it with a sign that looks like Frederica Station. And so since part of your review is looking at what is in the area and whether their changes are compliant and in character with the surrounding area, we do have a couple photos of just what's adjacent to the property. And we do see other metal roofing types on Mallory Street in the village as well. So these are your potential actions. These are your possible motions, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, Commissioner, do you have any questions for staff?
Stephanie, I'm not clear about the, the old sign that's being removed for one of the sub-tenants presumably. Now, is that going to be replaced on that roof, or?
Yeah, so...
So the bottom right sign will be replaced by another sign on top of the metal roof? Is that?
That is correct, yes. Yes, the bottom right sign that has been removed. So in the, I think it's actually been removed, yeah, it's been removed in that top photo as well that you can see. So they will be replacing that sign.
So are there three tenants in that, in that building covered by that new roof?
Yeah, initially, I thought it was, was these two, but when I was out on site recently, Pier Village Market was also one of the, one of the buildings covered by part of that metal roofing I did notice as well.
Okay, so that's the former bookstore?
Correct, yes.
Okay. I was just curious, is there going to be a third sign on the right-hand side or not?
They have not proposed anything. So this application is only for the waterfront gift sign. It's the only sign that they intended, or have stated.
You know, we, we have these sign applications that we approve, and I'll use the golf cart business as an example. We approved a sign on the front and the side, and when they opened up, every window had a business sign in it. I mean, it's just, I don't know why we went through the process of hearing that. It just, you know, it just, either the ordinance is superfluous or not specific enough. Just comment.
Yeah, and that's, and we can definitely take a look at that, because as, you know, we, we can only look at what is proposed and provided to us, but if they do put additional signage up after getting approval, we can look at that, and if it's a code enforcement matter, we can follow up on that.
So are the window signs subject to the sign ordinance?
Most window signs are exempt, so that might be the case with those then.
Mr. Chairman, Stephanie, you know, periodically, we get these things that come before, after the fact. Is there any way the county can educate the property owners down there, especially in the village area, that the business is about? All it will take is a phone call to see what needs to be done, and then they can start the process then instead of doing the work, and then, oh, here we come. We've had too many of these, and I don't know how, I don't know how to deal with it. Somehow, a letter can come from the county, just giving brief instructions of what to do if you're going to change anything on the facade, or the color, or the roof, or anything like that. So it might save some people some time.
Yes, Commissioner Willis, that's a very good point, and we can definitely discuss doing some outreach. And I think, you know, just every, every year, probably be a good idea to maybe send out some correspondence and try to get the word out about the requirements so that we can try to catch these earlier.
Any other comments for questions for staff?
So when, okay, work is done prior to getting approval, is there anything in place or will be put in place? You know, any type of penalty, you know, for doing that? I know in the past, there hasn't been any. So will there be anything at any time put in place to somewhat prevent this from happening?
So in terms of this particular project, we have not issued a citation to them. They were very responsive. Really, our first course of action typically is to try to gain compliance. So, you know, inform, a lot of folks are just not aware of the requirement. So we'll inform them, and as long as they're trying to get compliance. And there are cases that we do stop work orders, and that can be punishment enough because there's a time delay. You've got, you know, contractors on site that can no longer continue the work. In this case, they were on their final day, and just because of the potential for rain and water damage, we did not do a stop work order, you know, that day because they were almost finished. We didn't want to have any damage to the property by not allowing them to finish the roofing. So in this case, we haven't done any citations, but, but in some cases, if it's a recurring issue, and depending on the, the nature of it, we, we have in some cases.
Any other questions for staff? If not, we'll open it up for public comment. Is there anyone here that would like to make a comment about this application? Going once, twice? A closed public comment. Commissioner?
Motion to adjutant.
Yeah.
I move to approve application VP 4961 without modifications.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, call the question. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Yes, everyone. Thank you. This is, this is an amendment, an ordinance amendment. ZM 4950 Sinclair Track Plan Development District Amendment. Request for an amendment to the Sinclair Plantation Plan Development District ZM 2298 to add dredging or excavation of natural materials as a use in the PD. Subject property is located at 2050 Lawrence Road, St. Simons Island, parcel number 0414278. Jake Hightower, Robert Civil Engineering Agent for Sinclair, 1031.
And this just shows, the outline is the, the property in question. This is part of a larger tract that was initially part of the Sinclair Plantation Plan Development District. And the property originally incorporated more land, primarily the largest tract that incorporated was this tract to the south. Recently, within the last year, this tract has been acquired by the St. Simons Land Trust for conservation. And so this tract does have some additional, additional use that they're looking to add on to it. We, the county does not have any plans in the office for exactly what they plan to do on the site, so we have not received a preliminary plat or expedited subdivision for any, for any subdivision on the property. So we're not, you know, we don't know at this point exactly what is planned for the property. However, what they do plan to do is, is create a lake on the property, and in order to excavate materials from the lake and transport the materials off-site, they do need to get a surface mining permit from the state. And so they are requesting to add to their plan development text the excavation of materials to allow them to get the surface mining permit and also bring those materials off the property instead of using them just on, onsite. So this is the language that they are proposing to add into their existing plan development And that would just apply to this particular parcel that's in question. This is a survey. And then this is a concept plan that was in the original Sinclair Plantation Plan Development. And just to illustrate where this purple oval is located, that's roughly the boundaries of this subject property that's part of this plan development text amendment tonight. And so there had been a lake planned on the property from the early stages. So the lake to the north as well as to the south, their existing lakes, and they had proposed as part of the prior subdivision plans to install a lake on the property. Now, if they were to construct the lake and keep all the materials onsite, they would not need the surface mining permit or, or need to go through this process. But because they want to take the materials off-site, that's what's triggering this. So I just wanted to show that the lake has been part of the plans for quite a while. And so these are your possible actions. I will note, as staff was reviewing the plan development text, there was just a discrepancy in some language that we thought this would be an opportunity to clarify through this process. So ZM 2298 was the last plan development text amendment for Sinclair back in 2012. And so we, there was a discrepancy in just kind of some reference, and to clarify it, we thought it'd be helpful to add this as a suggested condition for you all to, to look at tonight. And I'm happy to answer any questions. And Mr. Hightower from Robert Civil Engineering is here tonight as well. Thank you.
Before we open it up for staff, let me ask staff one question. Stephanie, early on last week, there were some issues about the notification. Has that been cleared, cleared up, or do we still have some issues with public notification?
I wasn't aware of any issues with the public notification. We did have to reschedule this meeting. It was originally scheduled for the regular meeting on March 15th for the IPC, and the Brunswick News had failed to publish the notice. And so because of that, we did have to reschedule for tonight as a special called meeting.
Yeah, well, that was resolved.
Yeah, we did renotice all of that.
I thought there was some issue about having the wrong text or something that was available to the public. I may have been, I may be mistaken.
Okay, yeah, for the plan development text. I know, and, yeah, we did have to just confirm that we had the correct plan development text, because there were a couple versions that we had in our files. So what's included in your packet is, I mean, is the one that was revised in 2012.
Is correct, and, and the public had access to that as well.
It is in the packet, correct, that was available last week.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had. Commissioner, if, if you've got questions for staff?
Sure. If I may. Stephanie, could you go back to the original subdivision plat that was proposed a few years ago? My recollection, when we heard this, was the bottom parcel, who apparently now is in the hands of the land trust, and then the, the purple circle section was, was that going to be the conservation area, or the, the third parcel to the north? There was...
Yeah, I know this, yeah, this was one of the earlier concept plans, and my understanding, I believe the parcel to the north was, was conserved prior to the land trust having, this was several years back, that it was conserved, and hopefully applicants can correct me if I'm wrong. But yeah, prior to the land trust acquiring the, the southern portion, yes, there is a conservation, and I, I don't want to speak out of turn, I, I'm not sure if it's a conservation easement or another, yeah, I understand it's the conservation easement on that northern piece now as well.
All right, so the north and the south have been resolved, and now this is the middle. Okay. And so that originally was platted for how many lots?
Two hundred and fifty.
The, the middle section?
The total, the total.
A toe, yeah, toe, yeah, I don't, I'm not sure offhand, the middle section, but I know total.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get to public comment in a minute, but let's, let's let the Commissioner...
Sorry. 2.11 units per acre, what the PD says.
Okay, so we're looking at potentially 55 lots there in the middle. Is that what I'm hearing? Okay.
But that's over the entire property, though, so it could be denser in certain areas, I guess, right?
That's the average for the parcel.
Yeah, that would be subject to the, to the PD text, is the way it's outlined.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Any other questions for, for staff?
Stephanie, it references, the planning and zoning comments reference no changes proposed existing master plan. I'm sorry. The comments reference, there's no proposed changes to the existing master plan, so a new one has not been submitted. Is the conceptual plan considered the master plan? I don't see a master plan in our packet.
Right. This, yeah, this is what, so that, yeah, this was what I, I found in terms of it being the master plan for the, yeah, for the original site.
This is non-binding, though, right? This is just...
So it's...
Right. That's, that's my understanding.
So, yeah, the master plan, yeah, let me, let me double check that. Um... Do you have that? That's it? Okay. Yeah. Yeah, as far as, as we have in our records, I mean, this is considered the master plan, so, I mean, that would be something that, if they are going to be doing something outside of, side of what the master plan does, does show, then our existing code does require an amendment to the master plan. But as I mentioned, we don't know at this point exactly what they are planning to do, so I, I, my understanding is there isn't a change to it, but we don't have any plans that are in the office.
Well, the only thing we're here tonight is the right, their application to mine...
Correct, yes.
Remove soil for, to build a lake. That's all we're, the conceptual plan has no, no bearing of what we're discussing tonight.
Right, that's, yeah, that's the limit of the request tonight, is to add the excavation of materials.
Just that permit.
Right, and, and it's my understanding, too, that they have the ability now to dig a pond there or a lagoon, based on the existing language.
Yes, correct, they do.
Now, let me ask this, Stephanie. Would a site plan approval be required to dig the pond?
Not a site plan approval, but if it is more than an acre, then it would be an LDA, so Land Disturbance Act would be required for that.
Right, right. So a site plan would not be required. So in other words, if they weren't mining, they could dig that pond without any action from the Planning Commission?
Correct. They could dig the pond and, and keep the material onsite for use, you know, for fill, for the lots, or for other uses on the site.
Any other questions? If not, applicant, is the applicant here?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, thanks for your time tonight. I'm Jonathan Roberts with Robert Civil Engineering. This is Jake Hightower. And the, the reason for this request, as you stated, was to have the ability to dig a pond on this parcel, and then there's going to be a significant amount of, of soil left over that the owners intend to, to be able to sell and use on, hopefully on the north end of St. Simons, but, you know, for, for purposes for home building and so forth. The original intent for them buying this, and the owner is represented here tonight in Davis Love, there's a, a group of four owners, but they all have property to the east of this. And when it was going to be a dense development, they wanted to protect their front, their front yard. And so they've, they've acquired this, and it's my understanding, they also helped acquire the land trust parcel that's now in the hands of the land trust, in an effort to, to protect their, their homes and their front yards. And so now they want an amenity for a family compound, and the, the density on that is yet to be determined, but it would be significantly less than the 55 units that was originally planned. And that they, they want this amenity of a pond, and even the, one of the owner's relatives has a, a land clearing and grading company. He's here tonight, and he would be the one that's handling the, the dirt and moving it, moving it off-site. But we're certainly happy to answer any, any questions. As I understand it, this Sinclair development as planned years ago could have been 250 lots, as you said, and now we're talking probably less than 20 in the entire development, maybe even fewer than that. So a, a significant reduction in density for, for the north end of St. Simons. But we're, we're here to answer any technical questions. Owner's represented. If you guys want to ask him any direct questions, and then the, the company that will be moving the dirt is also here to, to ask or answer any questions you may have.
Do we have any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chair, I do. Jonathan, what is the vision of the tonnage to be removed or the acreage? Do you, do you have an idea?
Yeah, plus or minus 12 acres is the plan right now, which is, you know, a, a significant part of that property, and really, the, that, that will be a nice amenity for the family compound, and they can go to, to a deeper excavation if the market warrants that, that, you know, that, that will be dictated really by the, the speed of, of the sale of the dirt. They have said that they don't want this to go on for an extended period of time because it's also in their front yard.
Any other questions? I don't have a question. I just, you know, the last several years, all we've talked about in this commission meeting is density. And here's a, here's a big parcel originally, it could have been 250 homes. I remember that discussion, because that was just a few years ago. And these owners, I commend Mr. Love and the other three owners who, who have purchased this parcel, and I think they purchased it at a very high price, which enabled the land trust to be able to buy the other parcel at a better rate. So here they have done, what we're trying to do is reduce density, and I just commend you for doing that, and I, I can't imagine anybody not wanting this to go forward, because here you're taking at least 220 homesites out of the mix, and, you know, we, we can't do anything else better than that. So thank you, Davis, for, for y'all's vision for trying to reduce density, especially on the north end of the island.
Well, not only reducing density, you're also reducing traffic there, because it's awful when you're talking about traveling and Frederica Road trying to get out, so for that I'm grateful.
Any other questions for the applicant or comments we'd like to make? I've only got one comment I'd like to make, and that's, I know we've had several, several lagoons and ponds dug all over St. Simons, done exactly the same, the same way. This is not unusual for us on St. Simons. This is not unusual for us on St. Simons. I'm glad to hear that the applicant is, is anxious to get it done, and this is, isn't going to be a prolonged project. So that's, I would think that would be a good, a good thing. Any other questions? If not, we'll open it up to...
One more, is it all high and dry in the land right now, twelve acres?
That's correct, there are no wetlands on the site right now.
Taking out twelve acres of development, that's correct. Don't have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll open it up to all those who are in favor of this application, who would like to come up and, and speak.
Yes, sir.
Please state your name.
Hi, I'm Davis Love III. Thank you to the... With the land trust, with other conservation-minded people to try to protect not only that, but Cannon's Point and, and other big pieces of property up at the north end. And Commissioner Brooks, to your point, the dump truck traffic is just incredible. We're involved in the land clearing business, but we don't want to see those dump trucks going back and forth through our neighborhood any more than you do. We feel like that if we can get the, the permit and we can move the dirt, it's generally going to go on the north end of the island, and that's going to reduce the, the truck traffic up and down the island. It's a two-to-three hour haul from Brunswick to get to Frederica where all that dirt's going. So we can eliminate that through the traffic circles across the causeway. We feel like that's another added benefit. Obviously, we're self-motivated here. We don't want two hundred and fifty houses surrounding our marsh front lots. But the land trust has been working on this whole north end project. Bill Jones III and I have been a big part of trying to help them move that along. So we feel like this is a great solution for business on the island, all the people that are building houses, clearing land, moving dirt, are going to benefit from having the pit on the north end rather than way out in Brunswick. And then obviously, two hundred and fifty houses is, they say, five hundred cars and five hundred toilets, and that's just another big chunk that we've, we've conserved on the north end. So thank you for your time, and if you have any other questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Love.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak for this application? Yes, sir. Please state your name.
Good evening. My name's William Watley. Basically, just going to parrot what Davis said and about traffic and what you guys said about density. You got about a hundred trucks, give or take, every day that run. You got three forty-one, eighty-two, and Harry Diggers are the main pits, so it's not just island traffic, you're looking at major artery roads in Brunswick that that's solving, the tonnage moving across the road. You know, doing this, it'll be quick, the trucks will be island-focused, you'll have lower dirt prices, quicker turnaround on job sites across the island, and I just think it's to the benefit of everybody. Thank you.
Mr. Watley, I, I assume you're the one that'll be doing the excavation?
Part of it, yes, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Watley? Thank you. Anyone else that may want to speak for this application? Hearing none, anyone who would like to speak against this application? Yes, sir.
If I could say, I'm, I'm not speaking against it, it's just you didn't give a neutral position in that.
Please state your name, sir.
My name's Alan Burns, I live at one-six-seven Burns Landing, and we are right here, so we are your neighbors, and, and we appreciate what you're doing, Davis. I'm here today because we do back up to Sinclair. Some of you were on the commission when this came before last time, and y'all remember, I came and, and spoke with the developer, because we had concerns about buffering and protecting our, our properties, and he worked with us and we supported Sinclair at plan development. But our home's been there for six decades, our families lived on the island, we, we have the ninth generation that we're raising now. We're blessed with a multi-generational family and household where we live. My mother's ninety-one years old now and lives there with us. We read the staffers' report, and our biggest concern was that we didn't see any answers to our questions, and we had asked staff for answers to that. As of today, they, they don't have the information. And the concerns I had simply put are there's no map in the package, and they've addressed that, and I understand that is approximately in this area, and twelve acres will eat about half of that. And I don't have any problem with that, I would like to see a map. We wanted to know exactly the area, I assume is all trees currently, and I assume all those will be cut and removed from the property or burned. That is a concern to us, especially if they're burned. We now know the size of the lake, the total amount of dirt to be mined and transported off-site, we approximately know twelve acres worth. The duration, and I know they said they wanted to be quick, but twelve acres of dirt is not something that occurs quickly, and I don't know if that would be stockpiled on-site or will it actually be removed from the site as it's mined? And how, what is the timeline that they're looking for, for the duration of the mining? The days of the week, we, we live there, we have family there, my, all of my family lives in there, so we're, we are curious about the days of the week, time of the day, because we can hear heavy equipment back there anytime any's moving, and it is noisy. They wanted to know where the trucks would be parked or stored when they're not in use, and any mitigation measures that'd be used to control dust from dirt mining operation out on the site, because that's critical to our area and to where Davis' property is as well. The mitigation measures in place in case there's an accidental fire, dealing with the removal of trees, and again, are, is there going to be burning on-site? Because we're about a thousand feet from the property currently. The access routes, and they talked about going out to Lawrence Road, and, but show me where the access is, will it be going out your main entrance to Sinclair? Is that the access? I don't know. Our primary concern is how the mining operation will impact our households. Again, this is on a daily basis. The noise and vibration from mining activities, potential of air quality, burning is our biggest concern, and that was a concern, Davis, and I apologize, when, when your house burned, we, that was...
No burning.
Yeah, so no burning is great. The, because I do have, my mother's ninety-one, does have respiratory issues, so that is a concern to us. And what I was asking, if we could answer the questions tonight, and everybody's here, I mean, I love working through these things, I would, I would like to get them all answered if we could. If not, I just request that it potentially be deferred to, to we could get an answer on that. And again, we worked with the developers originally on this, and our, our whole thing was this buffer zone, because this is all of our family all the way across here, and the developer worked with us, and we supported him a hundred percent on that. So we asked that when you do proceed with a vote, at least we recommend operational limits on the mining operations, including time of day and duration of the mining operations, since it is...
Mr. Burns, you've got about thirty seconds.
Okay, I'm finishing, I apologize. Location of access routes, storage of equipments and vehicles, and minimize noise, vibration, and other impacts. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Anyone else who would like to speak against this application?
Not yet.
Okay.
I just have questions too, but Al pretty much asked all my questions, but I just want to say that I'm a longtime resident here. My parents live next to...
Pardon me, please state your name.
Kathy Petrie.
Thank you.
My parents, Oscar and Zoann Covington, live out there next to Al and his family. My husband and I moved back in April to take care of my parents and now live with them, they're unable to take care of themselves. My dad has Alzheimer's, and my mom is unable to care for herself. So we have that issue with elderly parents, and so I did have questions similar to Al's, just, you know, how loud it was going to be, the days of the week, how much traffic there's going to be. I know, Mr. Watley, we, you came out and were doing work and mentioned this, and we're fine with it, I love what you're doing, Davis, in preserving that land, and I appreciate it. I just want to make sure, we didn't know, we, we had questions and couldn't get answers, and like Al, I would appreciate if they could be answered tonight and we could move on with this, but the impact that it would have on my dad if it was loud and a lot of trees burning, I can't move them quick enough, you know, we had lots of questions. So if we could get those answered, that'd be great, but I do, I love the fact that there's going to be no more than twenty lots, of course, and that we have preservation of the land. But just answers would be great, so we could know what to expect.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else would like to speak, speak against this application or just have a general comment? I'll take that as well.
Jane Fraser, and yes, I do have a lot of questions as well. I think until these important questions are answered, it would be very prudent to defer this. Can you show the watershed of the proposed pit, and how will its construction affect the water level in the wetlands within the watershed? We've not seen any figures on that. How will this development plan ensure that the coastal supplements requirement to retain one-point-two-inch rainfall for the disturbed area be met if you are building a pond? Provide a copy of the tree survey for the development plan? What significant trees are intended to be moved? What is the sediment and erosion control plan for the land disturbance? What are the plans to prevent sediment from discharging to the marsh? These are all important questions. We've seen the Harrington Basin, we've seen the water levels rise, we've seen groundwater mounding, we've seen the problems that arise throughout these neighborhoods that perhaps you're not anticipating, but you should, because water is our most valuable asset. I'd also like to know if the project is funded by Senova's Bank, in which case perhaps some of the IPC members should recuse themselves. Thank you.
I'm Julian Smith, I live on St. Simons Island. Over the last nearly sixty years, I have dug or installed ponds, some swimming holes, spring-fed ponds, concrete-lined ponds in three states. About twenty-five ponds altogether, and I'm in the process of creating a wetland garden on the mainland. So I like lakes, but this is the first time I've heard that this is going to be a twelve-acre lake. That would be four-hundred-and-eighty-thousand square feet, let's round up to half a million, half a million square feet. How many cubic feet? How deep is it going to be? If it's ten feet deep, that's, what, five million cubic feet of fill that are going to be hauled away. So none of that's in the application we have before us. And I'd like to call your attention to the first page of the application. It says, description of project, amending plan development text for the Sinclair Track Plan Development District. That's not a project description. The project description is to dig out and haul away millions of cubic feet of fill. We are told on page, on the second page, in the justification for the request, there is a question that has to be answered by the applicant. Would this be in harmony with the character of the neighborhood because? And the statement provided is, this amendment will allow the owner of the amendment property to construct a pond and remove excess, excess dirt from the amendment property. Okay, so let's say five million... That's a non-responsive question, and it gets worse. The applicant has to explain why this would be, would not be detrimental to property or persons in the area because, and the answer is, the amendment property already has the allowable use of fine construction. That is not responsive. Fine construction is not the issue. The issue is a commercial mining application, which is, and so on. Let's go to the staff report then, I'll move as quickly as I can. The application package before you contains seventy-six pages, and only a few of them are really relevant. There's a lot of fluff, you've got, you've been given a typical data dump. So here we are at the bottom of page one. The applicant plans to construct a lake on the property, and then we're told, in order to transport excavated dirt off the property, they will be required by the state of Georgia to have a surface mining permit. Well, of course, they're not going to apply for a surface mining permit until the Board of Commissioners accepts or approves this. Then we'll start to see the details. This is backwards. We, we need those details now. Please go to page three. You have to decide for yourselves whether the zoning decision will permit a use that is suitable in view of the use and development of adjacent nearby property. And we're told, the proposed language will allow for the excavation of material for the construction of a lake feature on the subject feature of property. Other properties in the area, including Frederica Township, include a lake feature. Yes, fine, lake feature, that's wonderful, but the devil is in the details here, folks. And then we are, you have to decide, will the property be affected by the zoning decision has a reasonable economic use as currently zoned? And we have another non-responsive answer from the staff. Yes, the primary allowance that the, that this plan text amendment creates is the ability for the property owners to excavate and transport dirt off the property, and so on, and so on, and so on.
And Mr. Smith, you have about thirty seconds.
Someone who could not be here tonight asked me to ask Mr. Willis if he is on the Board of Directors of Senova's Bank, whether Senova's Bank is funding some of this project. And she asked me to ask him and you if he has a conflict of interest. So I'm asking a question. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Anyone else like to address this application, one way or another? Hearing none, we'll close the, the public comments. Staff or commission?
Answer some of those questions.
Right, yeah, thank you. Yes, the applicant, if you would please, please come back to the podium, there are several questions here. I'll go down the list, and you may have made a list as well, but number one was Bernie, we'll talk about that.
They are not intending to burn.
They are not intending to burn.
Okay. Any idea about the duration of the mining operation?
I'd have to defer to William on the duration, and I don't know that he necessarily knows at this point, but unsure on the duration. But it's in, it's in the front yard of the owners of this parcel, so that they've said that they don't want it to be any longer than it has to be, but the-
Right, I assume it depends on, on the rate-
The market.
Yeah, the market, so that could be six months or six years.
Right. I don't think it would last six years. It certainly, there's a variability for the amount on the duration that we don't know, but they don't want it in their front yard any more than the other neighborhoods want it in their vicinity.
Right, but you can see the concern of those-
Sure.
-that may live around, that they would like to bracket that somehow.
Absolutely, definitely.
Time, the time of work, you know, what, what time would, there be work going on in the excavation?
My understanding is normal business hours, Monday through Friday, and maybe half-day Saturdays, but William, if that's not, not accurate, please.
So, Monday through Friday, starting about what time?
About 7:00, 7:00.
Until? 7:00 to 7:00? Okay. Truck storage, or vehicle storage, I guess, was, is there going to be vehicles stored on site? I guess there will be excavation equipment that'll be there.
Correct, that's a possibility.
Right. And any, any special way that that, that will be secured?
We're discussing a few plans right now.
Dust control?
We'll have best management practices. As part of the surface mine permitting plan, they require management practices such as dust control, and I think it was alluded to, those details are to be worked out, because without the ability for the zoning to allow this activity, the ownership hasn't pushed forward with all of those details.
What sort of, what sort of methods would you use for dust control?
So, one typical method is just using, using a water truck to spray down the area and keeps the soil damp so that it doesn't get windblown.
Would that be something that you all would be prepared to do?
Yeah, it is.
Jonathan, does the land disturbance permit also require you have a crush-and-run exit, construction exit, to keep the dirt down?
So, in this case, the surface mine permit would be the permit that's governing the excavation instead of the land disturbance, but there, there would be a gravel entry in and out of the site to keep, keep some of that dirt off the road.
Fire, fire control? You mentioned that there's not going to be any burning, correct?
Right, there won't be burning.
So, any, and I don't know exactly what the question was about fire control, but I guess if there is something that, that it does catch on fire due to the, due to the operation, has anybody thought about how that would be mitigated? Call the fire department.
Right, yeah, I don't think I can comment on that one.
Access route? That was a good question, I thought. How, how are you going to get, get to the site where it'll be dug? Have you got an approximate location where that will be?
Yeah, so those details will have to be worked out, but the first choice would be to use the existing drives. If we planned anything differently than that, we'd have to get permission from Glen County to put a, put a new driveway, and so we would first look at the, the existing drives unless the ownership says-
Okay, can you point out the existing drive on the, on the map there, Jonathan?
Yeah, we've got that existing drive here, and the, the ownership group certainly may have different plans than that, but I'm not aware of them.
Noise?
Noise, it's going to be limited to those, those hours that William discussed, and it's going to, going to be buffered for a decent distance to the German Village neighborhood, and the residents that will hear it the easiest are the owners.
Right. What, what kind of equipment would there typically be on site? Could you kind of enumerate that for us?
Yep.
If you'd please come up to the podium and kind of tell us the kind of equipment that would typically be used.
So, excavators, dump trucks, kind of what we've discussed. There's not, there's nothing really special.
De-wandering law?
Yep. Whatever's necessary will be brought in, and might I add that the majority of the equipment has fire suppression built into it, and a lot of it's all brand-new, so, I mean, the odds of something catching on fire are relatively low.
And Mr. Roberts, there were some questions, and I guess this is about soil erosion permit, and I assume you'll have to have a permit.
We'll have to have the surface mine permit.
Right. So, the watershed was mentioned, I guess, in relationship to how, is there any issue with water or coming off the site to the marsh? What, what sort of basic things would you be required to do based on that permit?
So, the, the, the result of this will be certainly a much less intensive use for, for watershed than, than if it was the dense development, and we'll, we'll have to follow all the rules.
But I, I assume the question was based on during, during the process of doing, of doing the excavation, I mean, there's soil erosion things that have to be done, correct?
Yeah, there'll be best management practices that are shown on that plan that-
Such as?
Such as silt fence, there'll be the construction entrance, and there'll be the, the drainage calculations as required by that plan.
You might tell us a little bit about what's required for, for that application, what's required on that plan to get the surface mining application.
That's a, generally, we use the rational method. I'm not sure how much detail we want to get into this, but the rational method, it has a coefficient of permeability and an intensity for the rainstorms and an area for the project area, and we look at the pre-developed condition and the post-developed condition and compare those, those rates, but I'm not sure how much.
Yeah, what I was asking was, was what, there's, there's another application that you're going to have to have, correct?
Yes, sir.
What, what information is required on that information, on that application?
That application is laborious enough, not, I can't recite that from memory.
Okay. You don't know what kind of information they would typically request?
It's, it's a, it's a, it's a lot of items on there. What, what information are you, are you looking for?
Well, I'm just, I'm just curious. I mean, there's another, another step in this process.
There's another step, and it's regulated by the state of Georgia-
Right.
-who has a division that's dedicated to reviewing plans for land, for surface mine.
Right, and I guess, I guess my question is, we're just curious about, about what does that applicant, we've got certain things that the Planning Commission has to look at-
Right.
And we're curious about, but what's the state going to look at?
That makes sense. So, the state likes to look at the access. They want to make sure that it's got a clean access in and out of the property. They want to see the initial, the intermediate, and the final state of the project. They want to make sure that once it's complete, there's remediation, and the, there's a, a plan to leave the site in good condition. They look at the drainage, they look at the best management practices, and they have a, a lot of emphasis on those items to make sure that it is as, as minimally invasive to the surrounding public as possible.
Is this, is this monitored, is, does the state monitor this process?
They do.
So, they got the monitors that come to the site from time to time to-
That's right.
-review what's going on?
That's right.
Are, are you required to submit some sort of report on a periodic basis?
That's right.
I think, I think, I think that's all the questions I, I got, I got from, pardon me, ma'am, we're, the public comments closed, thank you.
Well, how much soil is being, how many truckloads? That's the question I asked.
Okay, well, let's, I, I will defer to Mr. Smith's question. He did ask that question. Could you comment on that, please, sir?
Yeah, the, the depth of the pond will be dictated by the market's absorption of the dirt, so that they want an amenity that's about 12 acres for their family compound. The depth of that 12 acres would be dictated by the, the use of the dirt.
Is that information required on the state permit?
So, the state permit would have the contours to show the expected, the expected depth, and so generally, surface mine permits assume it's going to be a little deeper than, than shallower, just because that gives them the right to do it.
Okay.
Before you leave, okay, in reference to the access route going out, is that the same exit that, okay, if you're given a permit to have another route for entrance, where, where would it be?
That's what I was going to add. So, there is a homeowner road, make sure I'm looking at it right. There's a homeowner road right here, this Alleger Way, that goes to four home sites. There's one road here that goes to another home site, so that's the five home sites. We don't want the trucks going on this road, if at all possible. So, it's a multi-step process, surface mining, land disturbance, and then asking for a curb cut. So, if, if there's four or five lots in here, we're going to have to have a curb cut. So, we're thinking family compound, but we don't want the family compound coming down this existing road. So, down the road- The dirt's coming to the north end no matter what, whether we get this permit or not. The dirt's going to come. Sea Island has, you know, they have these big new lots. Frederica is on fire, as you know. There's so many, bad term, there's so many, there's so many lots being developed in there. Williams Company is just one of several companies that are trucking dirt into Frederica right now. So, as long as the market goes the way it's going right now, and dirt is like gold, this will go very quickly. But, if family wants to build a house, and we're going to hopefully build another house, we don't want it there for years either. We want it, it could end up being a five-acre lake, or it could end up being a 12-acre lake, just depending on how fast we can get, get them in and out of there. And then, I agree with you on the noise, but, you know, we don't want it at 6:00 in the morning more than anybody else, so.
But right now, it's 12 hours, 7:00 to 7:00.
Frederica won't let you, Frederica won't let you come in their gate before-
7:00 or 8:00?
7:00, 7:00. So, there's no reason to, to start any earlier than 7:00 o'clock, so. But as I said, that 7:00 to 7:00 dirt, trust me, I live in Frederica, that dirt's coming. It came by at 7:00 this morning. Came by my house.
Yeah, it can come by that.
Please, please, let's-
You don't care if it's being dug, and everything else.
Well, no, I mean, but it's-
Dust trucks slamming, that's a different noise.
Please, let's keep the comments addressed, addressed to the commission, thank you.
I'll be glad to. You told me I couldn't ask you.
Yeah, please.
So, right now, it's open-ended. I'm just trying to get a grasp of-
We have to have a trace.
I understand, I understand. I understand.
And all that we're trying to do is find out, like my husband said. We might be fine with it, but we found out something that does now that makes us not so fine with it from 7:00 to 7:00, six days a week, or a half day on Saturday for infinity. I mean, that's, that's a problem.
Mr. Chair.
I, I, yes, I, I agree. Yes, let's, please, please address the comments up to here, and right now, the public comment is closed. We had, we had the opportunity. The public period, right, thank you.
Only thing I'll add is, as homeowners, like a lot of people in here, we'd rather them not build 250 houses, we'd rather dig a pond. We feel like that can happen quicker and quieter than building. You know, the Land Trust did a great job for this side. That was, I think, 77 homes on that, just that 40 acres. So, that noise of building houses for years and years was eliminated, so hopefully, you know, we can, we're a lot quieter than building another 55 houses on the tract that we bought.
Okay, let's, Commissioner, have you all got questions of the applicant?
Ms. Chair, I have a question. I don't know if it's the applicant or staff. The county dealt with a similar mining, surface mining issue on Harriedriggers. There were concerns about traffic and hours of operation. The county dealt with that, presumably. Can we hear from staff on, were, were there limits provided on the hours of operation? Is that something that's negotiable? I have yet to see a dump truck deliver dirt after 5:00, by the way, and I, and I buy dirt. So, and, and I'm also a bit calm since this is going to happen in front of some existing homeowners. So, I don't think it's going to be left as a stripped-out, you know, scar of land, but I think the hours of operation are reasonable to at least understand what are the limits and what are the possibilities.
Sure, yeah, Commissioner Nocken, I can respond to that. Yeah, there was a surface mining permit that was approved or used, approved on Harriedriggers, and a couple years ago, and we did provide some parameters because it was adjacent to a school or two schools, and so I know there were limitations on when they could have the dump trucks coming in and out of the site. They were not allowed to be there during, during the school drop-off and pickup hours. I'd have to look back at that particular application on, in the minutes to determine what additional parameters we did place, but I definitely know we did on the hours of operation to work on this school.
So, can that, is that addressed during the, the ultimate, the, sorry, the permit that has to be applied for, second step, right? Were those, can those issues be negotiated then? I don't think they're for the Planning Commission. We're, we're about zoning, right?
So, the Harriedriggers' application was negotiated during zoning, because some of the standards in terms of, you know, impacts on adjacent properties and on traffic, because I, I think, as you mentioned, we did limit access or required the access onto 17 as well. So, that was discussed and made as conditions during the rezonance, so that, that could be part of this discussion as well tonight.
Right, okay.
I think on my list of, of questions, there was one, one, one more, and that was trees. Care to try to tackle that?
Yeah, we've requested from the county whether or not the tree ordinance applies to this property, and the, the response is, is that the existing text governs for this property. So, the, the area for the excavation, certainly the trees, would have to be removed and, 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 and cut down.
Right. Has there, has there been any attempt, maybe now or previously, any attempt to do a tree, tree survey in that area at all?
So, that was one of the first things we, we looked at, and that, that area is a, is a pretty large area, and for them to incur that expense is substantial before the use is allowed, and then the county said that the PD text governs the, the trees on the site, so.
Is there, is there any way to identify maybe the, you know, the, I guess, the best trees, and maybe work, work your pond profile around, around the, what we would consider something that would be a wonderful tree to save?
Oh, that's 100%. We're, we're trying to map out where who wants what lot and move the lake around the night. There's some big oak trees, especially on the border where the little cemetery is. Up closer to the road, it's mostly just big pines and, and gum trees, and so we're going to stay away from the big oaks as much as possible, and it's our family compound. We're going to try to, try to keep as many and make it as nice as we can.
Okay, thank you.
And we would be agreeable to, to a restriction. We're just saying what Frederica, where most of the dirt will probably be going, is 7:00 to 7:00, but we'd be agreeable to, you know, some other schedule. Like you said, they don't, I haven't seen a dump truck after 5:00 either, so.
Mr. Torres?
I just want to comment that my understanding is the, the current tree ordinance, if the property is over a certain amount of acreage, you can use an aerial photo like this instead of a tree survey to show the trees that are on the property. Some of this is about what the county would require for a tree survey.
Yeah, I would, I would think, I, I think my curiosity was more about, about the, about the specimens and, and the application of trying to identify those prior to digging the hole and maybe working the profile around that as much as possible.
And it's something else. I know Frederica Township dug a considerable, considerable amount of their lakes as well, and they sold the dirt as well, just right across the street, and that was, I guess, 20 years ago now, but happened by-
Well, this, this lake wall went to Seaside when they built the Seaside, renovated the Seaside.
And we got a lot of the dirt for free from-
And 250 acres of dirt disappeared in Frederica, so it, it can disappear very quickly. We just can't get rid of it on 23.
And there's also Hampton, that lake at Hampton was the same, the same way. It was a bar pit for many years, as a matter of fact. Any other questions? Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, before a motion is made, I'd like to direct Mr. Smith and Ms. Frazier's comments about me. In the seven-plus years that I've served on this commission, no one has ever questioned my integrity. I've had discussions with our attorney about conflict of interest. And conflict of interest is when you receive a personal benefit from a decision that you make or you're voting on. I don't deserve, I don't receive a benefit on any of these decisions that I've made in the past seven years. You know, I would, normally I'd be really highly offended by somebody questioning my integrity, but considering the source, I'm not offended at all. I feel like I have a badge of honor. So, I don't need to answer your question about, does Mr. Love bank at Co, Senovus Bank, the coastal bank of Georgia? I don't know where he banks. That's no consideration. I don't know where any of the people who own this property bank. That's no consideration. So, just look, I just want you to know, I've got enough sense to recognize if there's a conflict of interest, I'll recuse myself. But when I don't have one, I'll sit here and I'll do my duty, and that's to hear the application and to vote the way the ordinance is written.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the proposed zoning decision as presented.
A second.
Please, please, Mr. Smith. Please, no.
Make, make the motion.
A second, that motion.
Proposed zoning decision as presented.
Have a motion? Do we have a second?
A second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion required?
Staff had mentioned, if I may, staff had mentioned now's the time if we wanna consider any operation restrictions. It is supposed to be done at the zoning discussion, which is new to me. Is that a consideration we can make, or?
I, I don't have any. I mean, I, I don't ever see a landscape crew, grading crew, you know, on any site, you know, after 4:30, 5:00. And I've never seen a dump truck come.
I generally agree.
You can certainly make an amendment, you can certainly ask for an amendment.
I, I don't know that I'm prepared to quantify or qualify any restrictions on that. I, I understand the concern, and I just wanted to raise it. I did not get a good feeling from the operator here that, you know, that they would be sensitive to that.
Well, Mr. Duncan, you can certainly make an amendment, and we can vote on the amendment before, and, and the Roberts Rules of Order would require we vote on the amendment first, and then, and then we would vote on the motion.
Okay, then I, then I would like to put forward an amendment that trucking and excavation were stopped at 6:00 P.M.
All right, that would be an amendment to the motion. All right, we'll vote on the, the amendment first. Do we have a second on the amendment?
A second.
Right. All right, we got a, we got a second on the amendment. Any discussion on the amendment?
Is there, was there a start time to that? Was that just a cutoff time at 6:00 P.M.? Was there?
Yeah, I mean, that, that, thank you, that was just the end of, end of the day operation. Start time is 7:00 A.M. I think that's not unreasonable.
Okay, seven to?
Seven to six.
Seven to six, all right. That's, that's, that's the amendment. All right, and we have a second on that amendment. All those in favor of the amendment, please indicate. That's everyone, okay. Now, we'll vote on the motion.
Okay.
All of those in favor of the motion, as, as stated with the amendment? All right, that's also unanimous. Thank you. And that concludes that. Other business discussion, update on ordinance amendments. And of course, the big news is by now, everyone should have, have their, the draft of the zoning ordinance in there, at least in your email, I believe. And, yeah, I made, I made this, but I was about to ask staff, is it possible, is it possible to get printed copies of this?
I think I pay $30 like we do.
I started to print it this afternoon, and I realized it was how long it was. And I was like, I'll wait for my copy.
Yeah, I, I can, I can check on that. I will say just, so with the different versions that are out right now, so version, version zero is what's currently out to the public right now. But that, that is kind of what I would describe it as, where the rough draft coming from the consultant, you know, based on the last couple of years. Version one is slated to come out at the end of March, according to the timeline that was adopted by the Board of Commissioners. And that one includes staff feedback, staff comments, you know, there's a variety of different, you know, typos, edits, you know, just different things that, that staff had, had made. So, our timeline is really based on the bulk of the feedback really coming to us after version one is released. So, with that being said, I mean, I, because we're. We'll have another, a draft that is really gonna be the one circulated to get the bulk of the feedback from the public.
Okay, how, how, how is this gonna work? I, I noticed in the timeline, there was a, a steering committee, a planning commission, steering committee mentioned in the timeline. Is that, is that committee been formed, or is it going to be formed, or?
So, the, the committee is, is you all. So, it's the mainland, mainland planning commission and the islands planning commission is, is the steering committee.
Is the steering.
So, we did not create, unlike the comp plan, if you were involved in the comp plan, that did have a separate group that was the steering committee there. So, the, the steering committee for this ordinance amendment is the MPC and the IPC together. So, there are some meetings set up between now and September.
Yeah, well, what concerns me is there is, there is, and I'm sure version one will be just a cleaned-up version of version zero.
Correct, yes, sir.
There's a lot of, a lot of stuff in here that really needs careful consideration by those that understand it. My concern is just throwing it out at the planning commission in general may not, may not, may not get us there. I, I, I just kinda think we might need a special committee that's willing to spend the time, because it will take a lot of time. It's taken me two, two weeks just to get through this thing so far. And I can tell you, I've got questions on every page. And some of it, some of it's boilerplate stuff, you know. You know, one, one simple example was in here, the setbacks, for instance. They're allowing porches within setbacks. Well, we don't wanna do that. But we need a discussion to kinda tell the, to tell them that we don't wanna do that. And that's just one example of probably several hundred, actually, Stephanie.
Right.
That are in here. So, and, and there's some new, new things that need some discussion and by those that understand what it is. And I made a little list. There's no new PDs. I think we knew that was coming. But we need to know how we're gonna handle some of those issues that PDs, that PDs did handle. So, we need a discussion about that. We've got a new GMU district, which is a general mixed-use district, which might take up some of that slack, but I, I think the way we've been using PDs, it, it really won't. There's some, there's some, some boilerplate things in here about the way we do things. A zoning change to a classification inconsistent with the comprehensive plan will now require an amendment to the comprehensive plan before that application can be heard. It's a complication. Of course, that'll slow down rezonings for sure. There's now design standards for everything. That's a, that's a big, big leap, and I don't know if any of the commission has gotten, has read any of that yet. I think we need some, we need some, some thinking as to whether or not we wanna bite that off or not. I'm not so, I'm not so sure that, that we, I'm not so sure we can enforce that. You know, you know, one of the things in there was, it just have to be like this, not like this. You know, have to be vertical, not horizontal. And so, I, you know, so we're gonna throw, throw that at the building, you know, the, at the building official to decide if the windows are vertical or horizontal. I, I don't know. There's a lot of things in there that.
I agree, Mr. Chair. There are a lot of architectural design standards that have been defined now, and it struck me as kinda like a HOA cookie cutter sort of thing. And look, the horse is out of the barn now. And I think to start enforcing some architectural standards in some of these neighborhoods is just, it, it doesn't make sense. It's not logical.
Right, well, that's, and that's, and that's what I mean. I think, I think there's some of that, and some areas might, might be something we want to try. I'm not so sure countywide. There's tree planting for the mainland now, which is, I'm sure the mainland will have something to say about that. They've always had. Changes to parking requirements, which I was surprised to see mostly reduced. And I, I know we've been having some discussions here lately if we shouldn't raise parking requirements for some residential properties. And actually, they reduced them. It's now for multifamily, you're only required to have one parking place, not two. So, I'm, I'm not so sure that's going in the right direction for us. Golf cart parking's required on the island. I'm sure those, I'm sure if Matthew Permar was here, he would have something to say about that. So, there's a lot of things in there, Stephanie, that, that I, I think we need a group, I won't say experts, but those of us that have been worn out by the zoning ordinance in the past, that, that know the old one forward and backwards, can now look at this one and tell you the differences, and then have a, a group decide whether or not we want those differences. And, and that's not to mention the general format's changed, which is a more modern format, by the way. I, it's, it's, it's what I'm used to seeing in other communities now. So, I, I don't have any problem with that, but there's a lot of, a lot of the content, I think, in here is, 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 is different. And, anyway, that's, that's my comment on that. Any, any comments on, on any of this? Any comments on any other ordinance amendments?
I've had some similar to you, that there's a lot of terms even here that aren't defined. Subdivisions are required to have a certain amount of amenities based on lot counts. And one of the amenities is a swimming pool. They don't tell you how big a swimming pool's gotta be or what a swimming pool is. Part of the tree plan says you have to have a minimum of one tree for every 25 feet of public street as any of our private streets. So, if your neighborhood's gated, I guess that doesn't apply to you either. They reference community lawns and public plazas and amenities for subdivisions and don't define those either. They are now dictating what kind of entrance signs and how you design the entrance signs of subdivisions and for businesses as well.
Well, some, some, some of that's been in there, yeah.
I didn't know that. I've found probably typos as well. I'm sure that's probably gonna be weeded out too, but is there a way we submit this that's not overbearing to you guys? I mean, I know this is probably a lot to take notes on, but I'm sure, I mean, I've got quite a few tabs to go over here, too. I'm sure Robert's got more notes than I do.
Yeah, I've got.
I don't know how we get this to you guys in a digestible manner that you can pass on to them, but it's not gonna be behind the ball, 'cause if it's coming out in 10 days, I feel like I don't wanna go re-halt you again and start over again.
Well, I think, I think version one's gonna be the one that we really dig into, correct?
That is correct. Yeah, that is, that is really the one that we are focusing. We'd like you to focus your energy on that feedback. But I think, you know, to your questions about kinda how are these comments getting back, you know, what about technical stakeholders that are, have been using these ordinances? So, what we, so, I mean, this, this went out to, you know, obviously it's a public draft, so everyone, you know, got a copy. We are planning to, right now, we're looking at kind of how to schedule these out and who would be present, whether it be staff at them, or whether we would have a representative TSW that would be part of the meetings, too. But we do have basically a technical stakeholders group, which are the developers, engineers, architects, you know, the folks that have been surveyors, have been, you know, the technical users of this ordinance, you know, on behalf of their clients for a number of years, as well as we have the comprehensive plan steering committee that was officially, you know, they, they ended their role after the comp plan was adopted. However, you know, the Vision Glen zoning update, you know, is a work plan item, you know, from the comprehensive plan. So, you know, a lot of the, you know, when you're talking about the design standards for certain areas, a lot of that is coming, you know, from the comp plan comments, and then, you know, through our additional public outreach, you know, through, throughout the years, you know, really, plus the direction from the Board of Commissioners, you know, has been encompassed in, in this draft document. But we should have a better idea, hopefully, within the next week or two of how, when those meetings will be, because I, I do agree in the feedback that we've received about having some of these meetings, so that folks can kinda talk through some of these items. But this very specific stuff is exactly what we're looking for, and our consultants do want to have comments in writing as much as possible. So, so really that email address zoningupdate@glencounty-ga.org is really where we want everyone to be sending their specific comments, 'cause that's really the best way for us to track everything and to make sure we're not, you know, making assumptions about what someone said or misinterpreting anything. I mean, it's just, you know, very, very clear-cut with that way.
Well, I, I, that, that's good. However, I, I do think there is, there's, it's, it's, it's not like a half a dozen or even a dozen, or even two dozen. It's several hundred comments that would need to be made, and some of it needs some give and take. You know, we need to have discussions among ourselves whether or not we wanna do this. It would be, it would be good if, if the, if the consultant was on board with that discussion. So, it may take a series, a series of meetings with, with, with a group of planning commissioners, both from the mainland and the island. We may need a subcommittee formed of, of, of group from the island and the mainland to get together. Probably, if we wanna try to get it done this year, probably at least once a week or maybe even twice a week, sit down and for an hour or so and hammer on a section at a time. There's a lot of stuff here. It, there really is.
It's gonna have a wide-reaching ripple effect on everything.
On everything, you're right.
And everybody's gonna get backlog, you know, people coming here with complaints and, I mean, variance requests, and it's gonna be, I know that's the way a lot of things happen, you know, you get some broom by, you know, just altering it down the road, but I don't wanna jump under this headfirst and can't swim.
Right, right. Well, my concern is, is that it gets out and, and there's a lot of things in there that, that, that we assume will be taken care of, and they are.
Loopholes and.
Loopholes and things, and things like that. We've already got that, right? And, and, and there's a lot of stuff in here that duplicates some of the issues that we've got with this one. So, so I would, I would like to at least iron out that in, in our new one. It may not, we may not be able to get it done in the timeline we've got. That's another thought I've had. It depends on how, how we're gonna digest all these comments. I don't think the public, I don't, I'm, I'm not trying to be offensive to the public, but I don't know if they have the ability to go through this and understand it the way that perhaps Michael does. You know, Michael's, Michael and Patrick, you know, they, they, they deal with this on a, on a daily basis. So, I'm not so sure what kind of benefit we'll get from them on, on the small items. The big items maybe, you know, whether or not we wanna have a design standards. That's something the public can, can certainly weigh in on.
One of my kinda concerns around, on, on, that is, we went through so much work to get the tree ordinance passed, and it was painful. And then, we passed it, and it wasn't perfect, and we said, well, you know, we'll get it right as it's put into play. It's never changed. I mean, it's been that way since we put it into play, and nothing's ever been added or changed or anything to it.
Well, now, now's, now's the opportunity, right?
Right, now's the opportunity, but here we are, three years later, and it's, we're still working with imperfect tree ordinance that we said we, we perfect as we went along. And now, this is the opportunity, three years later, which is, hey, go try to deal with something in here for three years before it gets fixed.
Well, it took three years to pass the tree ordinance.
Yeah, right. That's what I'm saying. And it's imperfect, you know, it's, uh, full of stuff, and we did the best we could with it, with what we had to work with, and not, no, no lack of effort for sure.
Well, my concern is, once we do get this compiled, get almost everything in there correct, we, as a body, we follow through on it. Depending on who, who it is presenting it, or what they're presenting, we'll go, well, okay, this is a one-time deal, or this is a small issue, or whatever. Often, you know, well, not often, but sometimes we do not follow through on what's in here. So, I, I think we need to take that in consideration as well, as a body.
Oh, absolutely.
Just like tonight, you know, they did their roof on their building, because they did no volatile progress to this, because there's so much stuff in here, you know, the community doesn't know about, that we're there.
Oh, it's even, even more.
Right, someone coming in front of us, oh, I didn't know, right, well, hell, we don't really know either.
I do have a question to you, Stephanie. I think you mentioned that you would be sending out a letter or something to, to business owners in the village area to inform them of the procedure, the process that they're to. to inform them of the procedure, the process that they're to follow during anything.
Yes, ma'am, I think that, yeah, I think that's a very good idea, so I'll talk with Director Thompson about that, um, because that's something, you know, we can easily get addresses for, um, you know, everyone who's in the village mixed use and in the village preservation area, um, and send out, uh, correspondence, and I'm not sure if there's an active, like, business association in the peer village right now, if anyone knows offhand, um, but definitely if there is, you know, we can, you know, coordinate with them as well, so, um, yeah, we'll, we'll work on something and get that out to everybody to inform them.
Homeowners as well?
Um, yeah, village, exactly, we can, yeah, village preservation, we can, you know, look at that boundary and send it to, um, yeah, private homeowners as well as the businesses.
Robert, why don't you come up with a group, no more than three, go through this, find two, Tom, I can suggest one.
We can't, we're not going to sell it tonight.
Together, a, a smaller committee of, either appointed by the, the chairmans of the, of the two planning commissions, or, or something, a, a group of probably no more than six to kind of, kind of go through, and then, then act as a conduit to the, to our consultants. You know, we can get together and say, well, this is what we think, and, and that's not to say that the public won't add to that, but to have at least some sort of consensus from a, a small group that, that could relay some of these smaller issues to them.
And you're speaking specifically made up of sitting planning commissioners, right? So, a subcommittee of the planning commissioners?
Well, maybe not always, you know, there may be people in the community that, that could, that, that would actually have a lot of, a lot to say about this.
Okay.
So, so there may be others. In fact, in fact, I was on, I was appointed to committee years and years ago, when I was a baby architect, I was appointed to, to committee, I wasn't on the planning commission, and we undertook to redo this one time, and we were on a committee to redo the zoning ordinance. Unfortunately, uh, the county commission, after, after somebody, I think the consultant said, well, forest agriculture is for agriculture, not houses, uh, they were no longer around, that ended, that ended that consultant, uh, so, but anyway, I guess what I'm saying-
Robert and the chair of the mainland get together and come up with that group?
I, I, you have the, probably the ability under your bylaws to appoint a subcommittee of island planning commissioners to study an, an issue, I don't believe that the chairs of the two planning commissions have the ability to create a committee made up of
Anyone else?
Other planning commissioners, and I think there's also the further complication that I think the Board of Commissioners could, could create that committee. I think there's also the, the issue of, especially if you want the, the consultants there, we have to pay for that time, and so, uh, the board's going to have to allocate funding for that, if y'all want to have meeting or, or twice, um, weekly meetings, weekly or twice weekly meetings.
Twice a week.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I don't-
So, I think it's something that-
I don't know that it would be, I don't know that it would be weekly, but with the consultant, but, but I was thinking with, uh, you know, maybe, maybe they come down, it, we don't have a lot of time to do this, really.
It's a lot, it's a lot to go through.
It's a lot to go through, even for the committee, and, and, and even if we had a small, small committee that could meet once a week, can we do it once a week?
Probably.
Probably, okay, and, and it, and it needs to be, it needs to be people that really want to dig into this, because it's, it's not easy reading, it's not going to make the bestseller list, I can tell you that.
One thing I suggest you could do, um, the, the mainland and the island planning commissions, if they would, were either one, or together separately, um, you could vote on a, a item to suggest to the Board of Commissioners that create such a committee, um, and if you have suggestions on the number of people, what kind of people should be appointed to it, how, what their, you know, mission should be, um, how often they should meet, you could probably develop that, maybe at your next meeting, and vote to recommend that to the Board of Commissioners, um, or, you know, individually, you could approach them and ask them if they'd be interested in it.
Yeah, but it's possible, it's, it's possible, Will, that i- i- if we do it with just planning commissioners, we, we don't need to do that, correct, if I'm hearing you?
Under the bylaws, you as the chair have the ability to appoint a subcommittee of the members of the IPC to look at, to, to study certain items, and give them a mission, and give them a time to come back to y'all and report to the planning commission.
Yeah, I've already touched base with Sherri Gibbs, uh, from the mainland, and, and told her that, my concern initially about how, how this looked, uh, she confessed she hadn't had time to really look at it yet, um, but I, but I could get back with Sherri and see if, see what she thinks about maybe combining some members of each planning commission to get together.
Is there having some professionals outside of the planning commissions involved?
I, I, I think there are some that we would do.
I mean, that want to come and meet on with us, I mean, I mean, that's to get it done, the better.
That's the people who wrote it.
Well, that would be the consultant, that's what, that's what Will was saying we would have to-
Surveyors, engineers, and-
Well, I was thinking of Gary Neville.
That's what I was thinking, too.
Right, Gary Neville, even, uh, well, George Ragsdale's even got some experience with, even though I, I, I thought the same thing, Mike, when I thought of it, but, you know, George, George has been on-
He's a smart, very smart fellow.
Right.
And those individuals that you just mentioned, like, they, they are part of, um, the technical, let's see, I know, I know Mr. Neville is definitely part of the technical stakeholder group, and I, Mr. Ragsdale's part of the comprehensive plan steering committee initially, so, I know those are, those members are part of the group that, um, will be looking at this, but I think for what you're talking about is just this kind of focused, um, yeah, focused group with the planning commissioners in.
I mean, I think sooner we can get some of the stuff, you know, going in the right direction, the better than wait until it gets further down the road, then saying, oh, that's all completely wrong, we're going to change it, and go back, start over.
Well, I think that's where we are, I just think TSW has done us a disservice, they dumped, uh, some boilerplate specs on, on the county, I don't think we had enough involvement earlier on with this, somehow they jumped from the comprehensive plan feedback to what we have now, and I think there was a lot of editorial licensing that went on in that, uh, because I was on the, uh, comprehensive plan committee, and, uh, I read all the feedback, yes, there was a discussion about perhaps having architectural, um, design specs, but it was a very general statement, and now they're talking, now they, they want to design a house. I mean, example, I, I didn't actually read it, somebody told me, so garages have to be set back five feet from the face of the house, I mean, and there are dozens and dozens of examples like that. I think we need to decouple these architectural, um, specs from the traditional ordinance that has been rewritten, and we put that aside, because that is what, that, that's going to be the big burden.
Well, you know, when this was first announced, and I, and I told, uh, I told the consultants this, I was on the stakeholders group initially, and I, I told them then, I said, you know, our, our concern's not so much new stuff, it's fixing the old stuff.
Correct.
I mean, I mean, yes, we got, we, there are some new ideas out, out there, and there are some woven in here that I think are, are good, there is a, a GMU district which is interesting, I'm not sure how it applies, it won't apply on the, it won't apply on St. Simon's, it probably has a, a wider appeal for the mainland, but, um, there are some new things in there like that, but, but yes, I'm, I'm, I'm more concerned about the, the small stuff, the boilerplate issues, parking, height, you know, we've still got the old height, height issue in it, uh, the Beech and Dune thing, which, which, uh, we worked on, uh, that's, that's not in here yet, uh, and I, and I don't guess that's made it to the commission yet, has it?
Beech and Dune has not, no, that was originally, it could be on March 17th, and it was, I'm sorry, it was going to be on March 17th, um, but it, it got moved because there were some questions, so probably not a big one.
Okay, well, I would urge them to go ahead and hear it, and not necessarily wait thinking that this is going to solve it, this won't, this won't solve that, 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 that needs to move forward. Okay, I, I think, I think we've said enough about that, any, any other comments?
Commissioners, if I, if I may, um, I, I think it would behoove you to consult with the Board of Commissioners on any plan they have moved forward on, on creating a committee, because keep in mind that the timeline and, and the way that this is being reviewed has been sort of, I won't say dictated by the board, but they've had input on how the timeline that they want this to move forward on, so, I hate for y'all to get at cross purposes with them, so you might behoove y'all to talk to some of the commissioners and just let them know your thoughts and stuff on that.
I agree, Will, and I've already done a little of that.
And also keep in mind that whatever committee is created, whether it's by you, Mr. Chairman, or the Board of Commissioners, they're going to be subject to open meetings, open records, that whole thing, so we'll have to have agendas and make sure that we can have the meetings scheduled out so that we can give proper notice and that sort of stuff.
And that, and that actually may be a way to get valuable public comment, is to have those open meetings.
And Mr. Chairman, if I might, just to keep y'all for one second, um, I've printed, handed out in front of y'all, um, a proposed change to your bylaws, um, as y'all remember, Janet, um, retired, and she was your elected secretary for the planning commission, for both planning commissions, um, and rather than have that be an appointed position or elected position, um, we're proposing that, that officer be eliminated and just move those, um, duties to staff, and that way, you know, Nisi, if she can't be here one week, you know, there's not an appointed person, um, that is just taken up by staff, so, that's what's in front of you, is just some minor changes to eliminate that position and, and reallocate those, um, duties to staff, um, not asking you to vote on it tonight, just look at it, if you have any questions or, or issues with it, just let me know, and then, if there's not, then we'll probably bring it to you for a vote at your next meeting.
Okay, yeah, if you would, Stephanie, put that on the agenda for the next meeting. Anything else? Here ain't none, and we entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All right, all those in favor may leave.